Okay, I have seven in box, so I'm calling meaning to order. Rise to say the pledge of allegiance.
I have the pledge of allegiance stated by the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, on my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have two board members not here, Shep Hoxton and Marcia Ward. They won't be attending online either. Have a quorum, so we can go forward. Motion to approve the agenda or amend it?
I so moved to approve.
Second time.
Second, all in favor say aye.
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 Oppose nay. Hearing none, all in favor. Approval of the minutes of October sixteenth twenty twenty-five. Could have those. Louis moves, is there a second? Mike Miller seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Hearing no names, all in favor. Jordan, any updates on the Board of Adjustments?
Yeah, so we had.
Pertaining here.
Yeah, we had one petition today, or sort of a two-part, which would be our second docket item. We had a prime soils variance, as well as a variance from subdivision standards. And those were both approved by us earlier today.
Anything else?
That was all we had.
Okay. Marcia's not here, does the staff have Eric?
At the last county board meeting, they did approve the one-year conditional use permit for past months.
Thank you. Any updates from the comprehensive plan? Olivia, you taking that one?
Just a brief update, so right now, we currently have an interactive mapping activity that's live on the website. If anyone, we would encourage everyone to do it, if anyone wants to do it with us in the office, you're welcome to do that as well. We will have another survey going live as of next week. The next steering committee meeting is going to be scheduled for January. There's going to be a township officer meeting, I believe, the first week in December. And there will be a worksheet going out to all of the townships in advance of that, so we can discuss that at that meeting. But that is all I have for now, we're working on the goals and objectives. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to move right into the petitions, the first one I have is docket PC eleven dash twenty dash twenty-five oh one. This is to consider the petition of James Allen and Charlene Allen, property owners, and Jeremy and Ari Allen petitioners, who seek a conditional use interim use permit regarding the following. To allow a single family dwelling on less than forty contiguous acres pursuant to the chapters ten point four, point six, point three-six, point A of the Winona County zoning ordinance. And I believe Erin, you have this.
Thank you, thank you, good evening, board members. As I go through the presentation, any questions or comments, please? I would welcome questions or comments, please do not hesitate to interject. As you said, the application is for a single-family dwelling in the Ag District on less than forty acres, so very common application that's before you. This slide shows the proposed parcel. Purple shaded area, and then within that, there is a red polygon that shows the approximate location of the proposed dwelling. Zoning information, as I said, the zoning district, it underlies the proposed parcel and the entirety of the area surrounding it is the Agricultural Resource Conservation District. And the ordinance pathway, I will not read it again, I mean, you did a fine job of laying that out, but that would be the way they work through the ordinance to pursue their objective. An oblique aerial view here. Since Saratoga Township, the proposed parcel is just under three acres. This guy's a panhandle shape, so you have a elongated driveway accessing the, in this case, the township road. And then you have the building envelope. Comes off Sinclair Road, and it is a rural setting, although there are a good number of single-family dwellings within a half-mile distance. Some site characteristics, if you look to the north of the proposed parcel, there's some mapped wetlands. And then to the west of the proposed parcel, in a good distance to the west, we have a public water with an associated flood plain and a shoreline district. Slope, so this slide here, yellow means pretty flat, red means pretty steep. It's primarily yellow, so it's a fairly flat site that's being proposed. Soil characteristics. So the entirety of the parcel is on the class three and class two soils, those are soils the county regulates. The petitioners pursued and were successful in obtaining a variance from the soil standards during last month's Board of Adjustment meeting. No, low sinkhole probability and no karst features. Some more site characteristics, so nearby feedlots. We've got one to the northeast, and then we've got one to the east. And we've got relatively low animal units there in the one to the east. Per minute history, so there is an agricultural building on the parent parcel in this case. And it's believed to have been constructed before there was a permit requirement for an agricultural building. And that although not a permit, I should mention that, I did mention that a variance was granted last month from the soil standards. Comments from the town of Saratoga in support of the application. And then finally, the same advice that I always offer to you from this slide. Committee should consider all materials of testimony before making a decision. Staff analysis provides guidance for draft findings, and the county attorney's office has prepared draft findings for you. And should the committee recommend approval, there are some proposed conditions. Any questions?
Is this the one where they're going to share the well, but have their own septic system? No.
I don't believe so, but that would be a good question to pose to the applicants.
Anything else?
I would just be honest, I was a little surprised that the township approved it, I was looking for the document that I had if I
Yeah, it's a twofold document. There's both the standard form you're accustomed to seeing, and then there's also an email clarifying their intention.
Farther down the road.
Thanks Erin.
Welcome.
Would the petitioners or owners care to tell us about your project? State your name and address, it's for the recording.
Yes, I'm Jim Allen, twenty-eight, four thirty Sinclair Road, St. Charles. The owner of the farm. Jeremy would be here tonight, but he, he's still working, he works on dairy farms, maintaining dairy equipment and didn't get done yet, so I apologize. Yeah, I don't have anything to add to the package Erin put together, I think it's very complete. We would answer any questions that you might have.
Anybody have questions, Mike? Are they going to have their own well or share a well?
Plan is to have their own well, because our well is not that fantastic. It, I understand you can connect them nowadays at that distance, but our well is original to the property and it's not.
How old is that?
I don't know that, I don't know that.
Just curious.
But it's, it's got several helps getting it, getting it to qualify.
Thank you, you had a question.
I was just going to clarify that on his behalf, because he'd asked that before.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Thank you, Jim.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. A motion to open a public hearing.
I move that we open the public hearing.
Second time.
And Jordan seconded, all in favor of open public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, hearing none, all in favor. Public hearing is now open. Anybody wishing to speak for or against this petition? Please come to the podium, state your name and address and your concerns.
My name is Tom Boosian, I'm the neighbor at two eight four nine three Sinclair Road. And I just have a comment that I'm really surprised that someone would want to build in that particular place. Because usually when you build in the country, you kind of want privacy and whatnot. And where it's positioned from my place, it pretty much takes away my backyard privacy totally. And other than that, again, I'm surprised that someone would want to build there in the first place, but so be it.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this petition? Please come to the microphone, state your name and address and your concerns. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against this petition? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address and your concerns. Okay, one more time, anybody wishing to speak for or against this petition? Please come to the microphone, state your name and your address and your concerns.
I move we close the public hearing, I'll second that.
Jordan seconded, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
You're against closing the public hearing, say nay. Hearing none, all in favor. Now, I'll turn it over to the commissioners. Jordan.
I'll say, when we did the prime soils variance last month, Erin went over a few different locations that they could potentially put this, and this seemed to be the best spot on this parcel. I'm sure you can elaborate more on that if you want to, but I just thought I'd add that little bit of information since I didn't, since I forgot to mention it earlier.
Okay, anybody else want to speak?
Well, is it possible that we could add a condition that they plant some sort of vegetation between the two parcels, so that eventually maybe it wasn't so visible?
Well, you know, that goes into the question of who should be deciding what kind of.
Well, yeah, I realize, but.
I'm, in my thinking, the person who needs the privacy probably should plant that.
Okay.
And make the decisions, you know, about how much privacy they need.
I had thought of that too, so.
Yeah.
So I guess I'm a little, I'm a little confused about where the driveway access starts on, since Sinclair Road curves so sharply here. That used to be a field farm access, didn't it? Field access only?
It's the existing field access.
Yeah. So is how is that going to connect out specifically to Sinclair Road without having vision issues?
It's rather open in that area anyway, you don't have trees in the way. You can see if somebody's coming or not on that road at that particular.
But I just, I just meant that it's such a sharp corner and the the property line doesn't actually butt up close enough, so I was just curious how the, how the driveway was going to connect up to Sinclair.
Well, it would have a, it would have a driveway permit from the township, correct, Erin?
Right.
Right.
That would be, that would be up to them to.
I'm on page twenty-three with people, I think you are too, Steve. I think that's the best map, yeah. Yeah, that would be a good home check.
Yeah, it's just.
Jordan, if I heard you, right, it's a field driveway off of there.
It is, yeah.
I provided some detail on the access.
Yeah.
So if you see here, this isn't an owned access, it's township owns this strip. Yes. So they have thirty-three feet plus of width here to connect. In this zoning district, there is a standard width that's required if you access via easement, that is thirty-three feet. There's no minimum standard stated if it's owned access, but if we just look at the ability to get a car down the thirty-three feet, the panhandle is also thirty-three feet. So you'd have in excess of that in a connection to the township-owned strip. This strip here is not owned by the applicant, so if they were to try to access through there, they would have to deal with that property owner to achieve that, but they would have the ability to make a legal connection right, right along this line right here.
Just seem, I'm sorry, it just seemed a little inconvenient to have a driveway right on that corner, but.
So that would be the purview of the township, this county does not have a standard in the zoning ordinance of that connection on a township road.
Erin?
Yes.
Is there supposed, this driveway back there is thirty-three feet wide enough for all?
Well, as I said, there is no standard for owned access in the ordinance, the standard for easement access is thirty-three feet. Whether in a practical sense that's wide enough, that's a great question that I can't answer.
Okay.
But in a regulatory sense, it's meeting the minimum standard stated for easement access, and there is no standard for owned access.
Okay.
It's a legal standard.
Your chairman?
Louis.
I see a little problem possibly in the future, if somebody else wants to feed some livestock and they're on the feedlot situation. Wouldn't I read here that they could not build or expand the feedlot with that house there?
No, that, well, if they did, they'd come to us, you know, to get larger number, which we deal with quite frequently.
What was the distance on that feedlot from?
The one was over a thousand, the one that has over a hundred animal units.
You're talking about the closer one?
Yeah, the older one, you know, they'd have an issue with the existing home for Mr. Boosian too.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So they would both, actually, the Boosian farm would be closer to the feedlot then.
But they can go to three hundred units without any problems, is that for us?
Well, on page sixteen, the staff addresses that under item seven. That's our packet agenda, which you got tonight.
I could complain if they turn around, want to put in a great big stinky hog setup, I don't blame blaming on that one.
But that's not what we're talking about.
Yes, I understand that.
And if they were, they'd have to come here to get it. Not for these people, but.
Yeah.
It's just more. Well, that's hypothetical. Okay, any other questions? Jane, one more question?
No, I move to approve the recommendation, recommendation for agenda item number one with the findings of fact and conditions.
Do we have a second on Eugene's and John's secondly? Any other discussions, otherwise all, all in favor of recommending this, you go to the county board commissioners. Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Hearing none, all in favor. And from here, your next hearing would be with county board meeting, it's Thursday, December eleventh. It's six o'clock, six P M. Okay. I'm thinking this room, right? So that's December eleventh at six P M. Okay. Now, let's move to our next docket. Let's docket PC eleven dash twenty dash twenty-five oh two. This is to consider petition of Arnold Hoff, property owner, Lee, Todd, and Lisa Hoff petitioners, seek the conditional use interim use permit regarding the following. To allow a new dwelling conversion of an existing structure on less than forty acres, approximately two point five acres, in the Agricultural Resource Conservation Zoning District pursuant to chapter ten point four, point six, point thirty-six of the Winona County. So I think Olivia got this one.
I do, thank you. So as Jordan mentioned, they did receive two variances earlier today for the subdivision standards and prime soil, which we'll get into a little bit. But this one is for a new parcel on less than forty acres is why they're in front of you tonight. So it is in Richmond Township, section thirty-two. The existing parcel that's shaded in green is about a hundred and one acres, they're proposing to split two point five off of that. So there'd be a ninety-eight point five acre parcel left. And you can see the interstate ninety down in the south of that aerial image. Lenander Road is a township road, and then it turns into a private lane. So that's what this parcel would be served by, similar to the last petition that was in front of you, they would need an easement for access to that new property. This is just a staff-created site plan, you can see the outline of that parcel that's being proposed in red. You can see similar residences along Huff Lane there as well. This is a petitioner submitted site plan, so essentially it's showing the existing structure that was approved as an Ag Building. They would be converting a portion of that into the residence, and then the remaining portion of that building would be used as garage space. They did have a septic contractor out onsite already, so they've looked at kind of the area that they're proposing to split, and have determined that there is enough space on that site for a primary and secondary septic system. And they would be proposing to share the existing well that's closer to that dwelling you can see on the right there. Some of the project considerations, it is A R C zoning, which does require a conditional use permit for a new home on less than forty acres. Even though it's an existing structure, it's a new residence, which is why they still need the C U P for it. The makeup of the parcel is entirely prime soils for class two and three, predominantly class two. They did get a variance from that, as well as the subdivision standards. They're proposing to use the existing building, like I mentioned, it would be family that would be proposing to reside in this new residence. And then, as I mentioned before, Lenander is a dead-end township road that serves Huff Lane. There's some photos of the site, this is looking northwest at the existing structure. Cropland surrounds it on three sides, and then there's green space to the east of that structure. Looking northeast, you can see the cropland there in, towards the left on the aerial image. Looking at the area where they're proposing the septic system. Looking northeast at the existing driveway that serves the building, and then it curves over to that residence. And then this is looking down Huff Lane towards Lenander. There isn't any new disturbance proposed as a part of the project, all of the work would be within that existing building, they don't need to add a driveway, they don't need to add anything, they're not proposing any new structures or additions to that building, other than just the septic system, which would be added in that grassy area. Richmond Township did indicate support for the project, the petitioners attended the August twelfth township meeting. And that form is in your packet as well. So staff recommendation would be that you consider all materials and testimony before making findings that support your decision. The analysis and draft findings do support granting this as a conditional use permit. We do have two conditions drafted in the staff report and findings for your consideration. Any questions for me at this point?
You talked about the driveway having an easement that's already in place, or?
So the residences that are out there
Yeah.
have easements because it's a private lane. This one, when it is split, it would need to have an easement recorded, providing access. So it'd be similar to the, to the residences that are out here already. Yep. Right, yep, even though it's all family that's out there now, in the event that it would sell, there would need to be legal access provided, yep. Anything else for me?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia. Would the petitioners like to come up and tell us about your project? And just state your name and address for the record.
I'm Todd.
Go ahead, we'll get both of you on the record, okay?
Okay, Todd Huff, two seven nine six two Huff Lane.
And I'm Lisa Huff.
Okay, tell us about this project.
So my husband's father, Arnold, is the owner of the, of the parcel, of all of the land. And my husband and I live on it as well. And it is our daughter, who, she and her husband, who, who would really like to live up in the rural area where she was born and raised. And they are right now in Utah, otherwise they would be here tonight to, to be represented as well. Because they're young and because they're trying to keep costs down, and it's hard to find housing right now, and because they, building, building this would allow them to do it at a lower cost, this is something that works and everybody wins in our family, we get to have family nearby and and they get to have a mortgage and, and live up by, by all of their family. My, my husband's sisters live up there, and my brother, John Pyatt, lives on the original farmstead that the farm was, when it was purchased. But we welcome any questions.
Well, it's truly Huff Lane, isn't it?
It, it became that even without our knowledge, because we lived there back when there were fire numbers originally, so we were, it was a treat to find that out.
Okay, commissioners, any questions?
I presume, based on the, what the building looks like, that it has a cement floor.
It does.
And it already has water. It's connected to my dad's house, which is named.
Eugene?
I presume that this photo we saw with the driveway going as the end that they're going to make into a house?
Well, I think that I, I think that the, it is actually the, the reverse. The, they're going to keep that as, as farm, like tractor, storage and garage space and, and they plan to do the back end of it actually as residential, so.
What are the dimensions, maybe you don't know?
The, the full building is fifty by eighty. The, the front is about thirty by fifty, and the back being fifty by eighty.
Yeah, the, the front, the front part of the building, we thought about it first, because it already had that insulated and lighting and, and, and kind of set up to do a lot of mechanics in there. But that is going to remain the same, so the driveway that goes into that front part of the building will remain, the driveway and the garage. And will probably just have a sidewalk going around to the side where it'll become the front. But there won't be any access of road to that. Actually, there really, really isn't any changes at all that's going to be happening. I'm just very grateful that they want to come back to be on our property, and they have some young blood to help out with some of the work around. And that's my, my dad's wishes as well.
So if I hear you correctly, the footprint's going to be the same.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yep, footprint will, will be right. See, we're well aware of the forty acres and figured out this would be the best way of doing it.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to open a public.
I move.
I got Jordan as the motion, and I got Louis as a second, right, just for the note takers. All in favor of opening public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose nay, hearing none, all in favor. Anybody wishing to speak for or against this petition, please come to the podium, state your name and address and your concerns. Anybody wishing to speak for or against this petition, please come to the microphone, state your name and address and your concerns. And third time, anybody wishing to speak for or against this petition, please come to the microphone, state your name and address and your concerns.
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
I got a second from John, right? Eugene, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose nay.
Motion to approve.
Alright, or movement to that one, he didn't hear a nay. Okay, commissioners, now where do we go from here? Uh, Louis, I think wanted to articulate it, a motion to approve with all the conditions.
Prove, yes.
And findings of fact.
Yeah, including findings of fact, correct.
I would second that.
Jordan second said, any discussion? Otherwise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose nay, hearing none, all in favor. And your next meeting, we're gonna recommend it, is county board meeting on Thursday, December eleventh at six P M. Okay, right here. Yep, thank you. No, uh, Eric, are we ready to move to docket, the third docket?
Yes, I believe so.
You know, as I read through, it's real confusing here.
It is.
So rather than me read the, the two amended seeking, I'm gonna let you do it and explain each. And I think I understand it, but I want to make sure I do.
You bet. Uh, this one's a little bit out of the ordinary. I would call this housekeeping probably more than anything. Um, as you see on the agenda item, I'm asking for two things. We're changing two official controls of the county. We'd like to change the zoning map to reflect, uh, well, actually, I should back up. We want to first reclassify the comprehensive land use map and take it out of R R S. And change that back to agricultural. But by also the same action, we'd like to change the zoning district, which is commercial or B. And change that back to agricultural. Um, we've had a series of applications recently. It's mainly Winona County that's driving this request, but you can see it does state that the petitioners, Mark and Cheryl Leonards are the property owners. We've been working with those folks the last uh, eight or nine months. Um, the board of adjustment has, has acted on a couple of variances, both on this property. For proposed uh, structure, which would be occupied as a um, occupancy on a semi annual basis or seasonal. By the applicants and as well as uh, the neighboring property, the Heims, which is located just to the west. And researching the files, there's been a few things that have been lost through transitions through our G I S. And through um, just, I guess, um, um, some filing, filing issues. So if I can get into it, those are the two requests. Uh, this is the parcel that we're zeroing in on tonight. It's uh, roughly that T shaped parcel. Um, I believe it's about an acre. And this is kind of their proposal. They wish to build a hundred by sixty shed, which would be also served as living quarters on that building. And that's gone through a variance to get closer to the, to the state highway fourteen. Um, we solicited MinDOT for comments and whatnot, so that's been working its way through planning. This is kind of the height of the issue. Um, when we look at our beacon, our G I S system. It's going to, um, when we select zoning district. It, it's correct on the county viewer is ag, but digging into it, which I have now the last couple of months. Um, this property was rezoned with the neighboring property because of the historic nature of it, going all the way back to the nineteen eighties. And then specifically, it was zoned industrial up until about two thousand two, two thousand three. And then um, the Heims and Decker, who was a previous owner. They sought to get that industrial district reduced down to commercial and that's where it, the record support that this is actually zone B. We plan or we intend to leave the Heim property. They got the, the seed business that's located to the west. That will remain commercial because that is ideally suited for how they are using this. But for this new owner of this one acre piece, the Leonards, the agricultural district seems to be the most compatible form. Compatible with the zoning districts. What also has kind of confused this part of, of the county or this neighborhood. Is we got city of Saint Charles. Here, 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 and then um, up in this area where the church is and some other properties. There was annexations that were proposed and so I think that's how a good part of the records got goofed. Uh, there were some annexations and there were some things that just kind of slipped through the cracks. So I guess I just want to, at this point, make the record clean, uh, as far as what's actually gonna transpire out here. Saint Charles Township, section twenty, immediately adjacent to the city of Saint Charles in a couple of areas. Uh, agricultural, you do have a poultry farm that's located to the, to the southeast of this. Uh, the, the first, the amend the comprehensive plan, this is a difficult map to look at. Because the comprehensive land use map was really adopted in two thousand one. We were to zoom in on this, you can see where the John Deere dealership shows up in red. But if you were to expand, 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 it's a rural residential service. And typically that almost prohibits or prevents residential setting. It's supposed to be for commercial activity or something other like industrial. So the first step is to make sure that the record is clean, that we want this one acre to go back to ag to do that. Uh, kind of showing the existing um, elevations and existing contours. And that it's um, a T shaped because of the historic nature of it. It used to be part of the, the rail system.
Ain't too far away from the tracks, right? The, the current bed?
Um, it was a former abandoned bed.
The old Northwest.
Yeah, it was the old Chicago Northwestern and before that, the Winona and Saint Peter. Uh, this is actually from earlier this spring, um, uh, Mark has all, already done a little bit of excavating. He's, he's bladed in the driveway and he's working on plans to, to get his construction. Um, the building that you see, that's the Heim property that's immediately located to the west.
With a slide, I'd like to leave that slide.
Is there gonna be another access off of fourteen?
No, no, because his son owns the next place to the east. And then it's, that driveway also serves the turkey operation. He plans on using that existing driveway. And then a spur coming to, to serve his site.
The, how big was that proposed building that you, you said, a hundred by sixty or what?
I believe so, yeah, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Uh, when I was up there today, you know, it was kind of wet up there because we've had rain. Is the drainage gonna be adequate down the ditch by fourteen so that there's not a problem?
He's gotta work with MinDOT on that as well as the neighboring property. They're gonna be doing, or they have been doing some filling and they plan on putting up a, a rather large structure to expand their seed business. In those cases, if they are going to impact MinDOT, uh, they cannot put that drainage in the right of way. They do have to provide um, onsite, um.
But I know where their proposed one, it's on the other side and they filled it in. I'm only looking at this one. Looking at the water coming off the roof that comes this way. And this afternoon, there was a pool of water in there. Uh, so I just, you know, I, I realize that zoning change, right now you just got a dead piece of land. You can't do anything with it. And do the zoning changes gives it potential. But I still worry about if they can get the drainage to come towards highway fourteen.
Yeah.
Cause that's their only option.
Yeah.
As I see it.
Rain gutters.
Even with standing wall, whatever they're gonna do.
Yeah.
So when they come for some type of building thing, those, that would be the time for that issue.
Yeah, we'll have to have those discussions. Cause uh, uh, you have to wonder about impervious surface. Uh, in fact, this case, it's, I think they only plan on occupying it as a dwelling like six months of the year, if that. Uh, they do plan on setting some holding tanks because that is the best alternative because they might not have an area for a mound. They're out, they're not putting a well in, they're gonna receive a water line from the sun's place, so they're.
Maybe they'll be on the second floor, I'm gonna have to worry about that drainage.
Yeah.
So what was the reasoning for the uh, changing the setback from a hundred and thirty to eighty?
Uh, they wanted, I believe, I'd have to see what it was, but they wanted to be about eighty feet. They weren't even gonna be as close as the neighboring property, but they wanted some consideration to be somewhere, you know, behind this line here. You see, this is the right of way.
Yeah.
From that, so they wished to be, the, the setback off of highway fourteen is a hundred and thirty feet.
Yes.
That's gonna be very difficult to me, though they were asking for, I believe in this case, a hundred foot for that one. Actually, the neighboring one that we had a couple of months ago, I believe they were asking for somewhere in that neighborhood too.
And since this is a T, there's uh, a little bit of land between their property and fourteen. Who owns that?
That'd be the state, that'd be state right of way as well. Yep, you, there's a survey document and then there's also that aerial. But that area between highway fourteen and that green parcel is actually would be recognized as state right of way, highway right of way.
And the state doesn't have a problem with this being a T, that cutting into what they would consider their right of way?
Um, the, anything that the owners of this property do, they cannot um, enter into the right of way with any of their development.
Yeah, that's.
I, I remember years ago being on the development council in town and uh, maybe that's where some of this got rezoned that way. Is that the D O T at that time said, uh, we were trying to find places that we could encourage uh, development of. Between our existing railroad tracks that's there and highway fourteen. And it got zoned or pushed to zone it um, industrial, you know, so there would be a place to do it. Good land used in between the railroad tracks, turkey barns. And part of the issue was is that they said they need to have a furniture road. They didn't want all these driveways coming on the highway fourteen. And that's why some of that setback was probably there. And then Heims actually built their building up closer than was originally intended. But it might have been the driveway was gonna be there and there was gonna be a furniture road to feed any further development there. I remember that being a, a conversation or long range potential plan, you know. Railroad track being in, on the south side of it and stuff, without industrial use would be the most likely thing. Building houses in there wasn't gonna be real attractive with the turkey sheds and the, the railroad tracks right in your backyard.
And part of the reason, the previous property owner of this uh, one acre, I believe was John Decker.
Yep.
And I think he was holding out hopes of, of maybe building mini storage, build, uh, buildings or facility for, for storage. And I think he held on to that desire for quite a while. And I think now, you, you, you just one acre, it'd be minimal. He'd have to go through the, through the steps. And I think uh, um, interested uh, buyer of the property kind of revealed itself. And that's why I guess we're here to, tonight to kind of finish those steps to, to do that. Again, these are from earlier, the driveway, you see where the vehicles parked, that's already in now, where they do have a crushed rock access coming from.
Yeah, they were out there working today on it.
Yeah, I saw that.
The sun lives here, but it'd be actually, it actually has to be on the other side of the right of way. They had to make sure that that driveway was not in the right of way, so.
So is that uh, driveway that's there owned by the sun or is that owned by the turkey farms?
Um, there's a number of easements. If you look at those deeds, there's a number of ingress egress. Uh, easements for accessibility on it. Again, this was earlier.
With it, uh, is it uh, in industrial uh, use, they can't build a house there as part of the.
Correct, under a commercial, yeah. We could, we.
Or industrial.
They could really stretch it, but it didn't, it wasn't a very good fit. If it was like caretaker for a commercial business or something and he has a, a commercial business. But he, we didn't want to stretch the ordinance to that. We thought this would probably be the most cleanest route is to get the zoning and to get the comp plan back. To the consistent area, which would allow this much more cleaner and defendable.
That's just kind of an odd place to build a dwelling that they're only gonna use six months a year.
I'll tell you what, if it was twelve months a year, it ain't a desirable place.
No, it isn't either, yeah.
Stomach ice coming down, she been giving her the beans and the railroad tracks on the other side.
I think.
Turkey plants in the summer when.
You get that nice country fresh air.
Yeah.
Especially when it's from the southeast wind.
Right, it's right in your backyard or yard.
Wasn't the idea they were gonna park a R V or something in the?
I don't know, yeah, it could be, it could be that.
If we just do a setback.
A setback variance and prime soils because we already assumed it was ag. So you know, this is to clean that up and actually technically, they probably wouldn't have needed that prime soil variance because of its own commercial. But I guess, you know, that's, that's when we're looking at the county system, we are under some.
One acre of land, which is, you know, partly the naked.
Yeah, so.
Would they need more, you know, from us going forward?
No, I think we'll, we just have to issue the zoning, septic permit, a new address. They just need administrative per, permitting from our office if this is possible.
What, what you're saying is maybe you'll end up cleaning up a lot of red paint.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, this is housekeeping to, to get our zoning maps and our official documents in line.
Light industry or something there, you know, it would be a good land use of that. When they were looking at it and it's never happened.
Yeah.
That's thirty years.
Access is not good either.
No.
Um, I did meet with the Saint Charles Township Board on October twenty first, went over this discussion. And as is their kind of typical um, protocol, is they just offered no comments and thanked uh, for, for the Q and A session, so. It's good, so. And this one's a little different because we're changing official documents. We don't have conditions. But we do, staff has rep, you, you can't arbitrarily do rezoning or reclassification. Or it has to meet certain um, sections of the ordinance that talk about the zoning amendments. And in this case, um, staff, um, when we looked at the situation, we offer the five. Uh, bullet points, the five criteria for making this change to recommend approval to do that, so. With that, I'll take any additional questions.
You mentioned that you're doing housekeeping here. Now I could stand some help with housekeeping too, Eric.
We all could, I think.
Don't come to mind.
That would need more than just the changes.
So what they're seeking approval for is the changing of, of this to agricultural and.
To agr.
Build it and to have a building on there at the same time. Or will they need to come back later for a building?
No, they've already applied for the building part of it. This is just to make it consistent with their desire and the actions and what we've already set our course on with the, with the property owners. This is, so that's why you see in the notice and in some of the documents, that's Winona County and the petitioners. Because taking a holistic view of this, uh, this is, this is what would, I guess, be the best suited action for everybody involved.
Any other questions on why the zone have changed?
Well, the biggest thing is they're gonna use it for residents, can't do it with it's own industrial or.
Thank you, and that's just what I want to make sure you knew.
Gonna find this, A, try to residential, they can't.
Correct.
So I'll put a star on there.
Use, it's.
Just a lot of housekeeping to clean up.
I just know, re-designating it back to what it used to.
Do we need to open the hearing to the public then?
Yeah, no.
No comments.
Okay.
There was nobody to comment, so.
Well, but occasionally you want to make sure.
Yeah.
But this is internal, the county's trying to, it just, cause as I read through it, it was kind of a mess to begin with. So if this makes it clear for a county to do their job.
Only an acre and there's so many different owners and things that have happened over the last thirty years and that, that stuff that.
Yeah.
But I think.
My biggest concern was the setback difference of a hundred and thirty to eighty and it sounds like that's.
Well, I'm building a school certain that, right, so.
But that's not our.
No, but it's uh, not aligned with already.
I would move we recommend this to the county court for. I would move we recommend this to the county board for approval.
Can we have a second?
I'll second.
Louis got beat out here. Eugene seconded, it resonated with me. All in favor of recommending this back to the county board, say aye.
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 Oppose, nay. All in favor, so it goes back to the board and you guys know what to do with it. Uh, I don't know what hearing that'll be, same night? Okay, on December eleventh and at six o'clock. If there's no other business, we'll entertain a motion.
Go move.
Second, second from John, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Hearing none, we are adjourned.